Alrighty, Northern Burks Regional Police Report. This is for August twenty twenty five. So for calls for service from Maiden Creek, there were six, three hundred sixty four. Uh Maiden Creek had fifty six citations. Maiden Creek had forty nine traffic warnings. There were eighty vehicle contacts in Maiden Creek. There was one arrest. Uh Maiden Creek, which uh was eight hundred ninety seven month hours, twenty nine day hours. And there was twenty four crashes in Maiden Creek. Any questions on that? Alright, engineering reports.
Alright, Diane requested the crossings at Maiden's Creek submit a new time extension. So the current time extension, I believe, was another ninety days. Diane, is that correct?
Yep, so December twelfth.
December twelfth, uh again, this is the one that they're waiting on the sanitary sort. Easement to hopefully to ground it as the authority does not want the grinders, individual grinders with the low pressure sewer or pump station. So we've been continuing to do this time extension, probably be approaching a year. Um I don't know legally how many more times. We do that or we just keep holding?
If they requested, I mean, we could tell them it's it's at certain point, you just have to give a reasonable amount of time to them, but there's no legal standard.
We know where they're at.
Is it their handle or is it coming like is negotiations amongst authority?
We usually hear through the grapevine that it's a negotiation issue for the purchase of the easement. As I believe what you've heard over and over again.
They need three different easements.
Sure.
And one of the owners passed away recently, so now they're still in the situation.
So complicated.
I got you.
So I still, I mean, I recommend still to keep it going.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to extend until December twelfth, two thousand twenty five for crossing Maiden Creek.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Uh the other potential action, I'd just like to put this on the agenda and Diane and I um discussed this via email. It's just to have it as part of the minutes for the MS four report that's due every year. Uh it's due September third, so we will need to submit these for the next board meeting, so we're just hoping for authorization. And I think Diane, you're the one to sign, so we'll be authorizing Diane to submit the formal MS four report.
Motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Uh otherwise, you have my updates that are in my report unless there's any questions. Uh before the meeting started, Keith, we were quickly discussing the, where is he? He's hiding. There he is.
Oh, in the back, isn't he?
Not only in the back, manhole covers Josh's.
On East Wester, right?
They're done.
That's what I thought, they're done.
They're done.
So there, AGK is completely done with the project.
So that pay up should be on your next agenda.
Okay.
And that's all I have unless there's any question on the engineers' report.
Is there any work on here, but nothing ordered?
Nothing to take action on.
Alright, solicitor?
So of course they'll drop easements the full hour.
So we're not getting them back, but I'm still waiting for direction on the one that the authority easements. I haven't heard if I can send those out or not.
To them?
To that, well, to the property owners. One's us, but there's another. Uh so we need follow up on that, but how long does the board want to wait before they take action to take the easements?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the bridge was ordered and we have them on hold right now.
Right, you're ready to move back to the bridge.
So if we have to take um it's probably a three month period before we would be able to file. We need approvals to uh at certain point, we'll file, they would have a thirty day right to appeal, to file preliminary objections, excuse me. Um which could take, which could hold things out, if they don't file preliminary objections, then file a document which is finally just competition. At that point, we can take possession. So we do, there is a streamlined process to take possession. Doesn't mean the fight's over with them, they could still challenge the amount we're offering them. And that could take six years, but you get possession during that six year period. So you get possession pretty quickly, uh but it could take several months. So I think you need to know when you're gonna be ready to build and we can back up maybe four months before that and that's that's our drop dead date.
The the landowners in question, I'm trying to remember the email that had the the applicant or the the plans that we sent or they sent to them. I thought one, is one of them permanent easement, the second is a temporary, both, so there's temporary on both. Both the one has a permanent and temporary.
Exactly.
And the one that's hanging up.
Nobody's gotten that.
I got you, okay, that's what I want.
I think that's the same property owner that UGI is trying to.
Right. So UGI did contact me today, they've gotten through to one person with a phone call. They believe they want to do their work in January, January to February fifteenth. There's very small windows where we can work in the stream because of the travel.
True.
And bats. Uh so January to February fifteenth, they're gonna go, Med Ed still hasn't finished their design, but we probably, our next window is probably July. So we need to have everything ready to go by July one.
July twenty twenty six.
Alright, I guess we gotta find out too, since we already have the bridge on order.
And they want to deliver it to the site, they don't want it given here in the store, so.
So I don't want everybody, I don't want everybody to know, so they they provide a gym for it to set piece and if we, they provide it for a week, right? And anything after a week, because it should be installed within seven days or whatever, uh five, five working days. Uh any day after that, I think it's a five hundred dollar day, rental fee basically for this this boom for for crane or excavator and stuffies. So they want to deliver them onsite so that everything's ready to go and we can knock it out right away.
That would be staged on the road.
Correct.
The room would be closed.
Correct. Um we had talked about ordering it and just having it sit here, but I don't wanna be dealing with trying to find a, you know, a rental for a gym and get everything in there. If they're gonna provide it as part of the kit, I'd rather than just do it. But yeah, is the price gonna get driven up if we keep pushing this down the road? I guess these are some questions we're, or or do we just let sleeping dog lie for now and let them give us the cautionary phone call and say, hey, this could change?
Yeah, no.
I think we should do it.
It's ordered.
So that would mean for specs, you want July first, so to back up into that, or they, I'll call it the rest of the labor.
Well, nothing's gonna happen.
I think, I think I'd like to have everything already hit the ground July one.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Our permit's gonna run out before we even hit the road.
The authorities JP was submitted, so that's into GEP, so we're waiting on that.
As far as I know, UGI is now one, but they wanna go around off through.
Correct, but on this side.
On side.
Back one.
Yes, correct.
Can you do it on this?
Med Ed said they would not work on the plan until they receive a check in hand, so I don't know if they've started yet, but they should have gotten the check.
Because that was second last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Why do things have to be so complicated?
This is too many moving parts.
Well, that's the frustrating part, that's a conversation I did have with some of these that like, I get it's government, I get it's tied all that, but there's no reason some of these things need to take this long.
Correct.
Alrighty.
Anything we need to do?
I also need to know here, make sure Cameron knew where we were at.
Well, I think we give it.
I'm gonna make some effort to make contact.
Well, I think, I think we have to do full court press before the end of the year, because January first is when these timeframes are gonna start tightening shirts.
Yeah. I think we give it, and after that, we kind of get the call.
Diane can make calls in between.
Yep. Is that it for you?
Yes. Although I will need an executive session to talk about potential litigation. No action will be taken on what I'm asking.
Okay. Alrighty, Public Works Keith.
Our annual Public Works trade show is coming up on October first. It is where all the Public Works departments get together at Oley, um get a little bit of equipment, uh give some competitions they can choose. And then you get lunch and they send you on your way.
They do a little training session.
Oh, yeah, and this this training is gonna be electrical safety.
Right.
It's gonna be a what?
Electrical safety.
Electrical safety.
I need a charge of that.
Yeah, present by Med Ed, so.
Well, it's a good thing I'm going because I'm gonna go on Med Ed a little bit.
The guy probably has nothing to do with our project. Don't beat up some poor innocent guy.
He's going back to cold climate.
Yeah. Well, that's honestly our guys have been doing, are you going white pools now?
Pretty much.
Oh, that timing just can't work out.
Yeah, we've uh, we've got a lot.
Sounds good.
Are there any that aren't functional at this point or?
Um there's two that are in Med Ed's hands at this point.
Those ones up there at Golden Hoke Park area, there's just no energy through the pole. You can't do anything about that, so you need it.
Alrighty.
Alright, um the salt contact came through, so since we do have a larger salt going now, uh one to discuss with the board as far as what their thoughts are as far as the amount of salt that we would choose to get. We have about two hundred tons of salt in there now from last year and about fifty tons of cinders, so.
Are you gonna want more cinders? Yeah, I think so. So last year we ordered what we thought we would potentially need, and then there was a salt shortage. And then freaked everybody out in the county because nobody could really get it. I I don't necessarily go crazy on it, but we have the room now to store enough. What are your recommend, what are your thoughts on, what do you think we should get this year?
Well, I think.
Yeah.
Five hundred.
Cause that thing's built to hold a thousand.
Thousand.
Yeah, I think we'll be on the safe side.
I agree. And you said there's about two hundred in there now, so.
Yeah.
So I think we'll be okay. I'm, I guess we need a motion to authorize it, yeah, so.
I'll make a motion to purchase five hundred tons of salt.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Park and Golden Road stormwater.
Park and Golden Road stormwater, aye. Along with uh several phone calls with Jeff Gilbert from Pendide. It appears when we initially sent Pendide out, when we looked at the pipe, they got the wrong one. Yeah, big surprise. Um so when they looked at that pipe, they they saw, whatever pipe they looked at, I wasn't sure which one, they said it was all clear. So in conversation with Jeff, they planned in the right direction at Stony Creek, Lawson Park Road and Golden Road area. That they're gonna check it and see what they can do because right now they're scheduling work and looking for work. So my recommendation would be to kind of wait and see what Pendide does before we take an action. Something like this, like, let's see if they can clean that out.
Okay. Yeah.
Is there a way we can meet with them to make sure they have the right one?
I've tried, Keith and I were both there and we had, um we had a company come out and try to scope it. And their robot couldn't even, couldn't even make it in. And uh we tried to get in from Stony Creek side, did you try the other side too?
Well, that that pipe was a little too small.
Next down, oh yeah, that's right, the neck down.
He was ready to counter through that, so.
Small because it's being crushed down or?
No.
No, diameter is too small, it's a, it's like an RC car, they drive through the camera zone.
Can you mark it with a stake or something and then call Jeff Gilbert?
Where the lockage is?
Or at least where the pipe is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we tried to get him out before, but didn't he get lost or something?
Yeah, it was a whole ordeal.
He was on the.
The district manager was supposed to drive over right away, then he got called into a meeting or something, and then when he went, come out, he was, I don't know, couldn't find it or whatever. So he's gonna send the guys out to take a look at it. So this is the first that I'm hearing that they didn't actually look at the right pipe.
Yeah.
So, but yeah.
Would you also call Melissa Garcia and let her know what's going on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do have to, I don't know, there is a little bit of a sinkhole starting from the issue because of where the two pipes come together, we think. I think what what happened was back in the day, they just took another pipe, shoved it in there and grounded around it, and the ground's not falling out at the end of it because it went through two different sized pipes. Instead of putting a, an inlet structure or a manhole in there, do it the right way, they just wedge them together and routed it, and now we have a failure. So, and that's what's putting extra stress on on the water table at our foundation, that's what she's getting water in the basement. Okay.
Uh last thing I have is approval for line painting, we should have your code in front of you for the the paint ready. Um that is basically gonna do the roads behind the lake, which would be Rushore, Kemmer, Burke, Kohler, Acton, Foxlawn Ridge. And also do East Wester, what they paved, and Golden. And this will be our first real large test for our homemade line structure that we made. So that is why we're gonna start timing it first. Get a little field work and and then we're gonna, you know, you know, go through East Wester and Golden and finish the white lines on that.
I wanna give, I know you kind of made a crack of it, I wanna give, so everybody here knows, uh we purchased a field groomer for maintaining the ball fields and stuff at the park from Berkeley, super cheap, we got it on the initiative, and um we were looking at it, instead of purchasing a line painter for thirty thousand dollars, we decided to outfit this machine with a sprayer, an inverter, and uh.
Generator, oh yeah, it's it's interesting.
Quite the operation, but it it works. So kudos to the crew for figuring that out.
So you're putting the paint down by the gallon, on five gallon.
Five gallon.
Yeah, these are five gallon pails, yeah.
Which is how the other machine works too.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to purchase, you want white at the cost of five thousand nine hundred sixty nine dollars and yellow at two thousand one hundred twenty nine?
Yeah, it should be two, two hundred thirty five gallons of the white and eight five of the yellow.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you do a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Just wanted to bring up about the collection this weekend, that that's all I'm here. I will go on board, but that is going on this weekend, so. Yep, so the, what do you want elaborate?
Our our annual cleanup day is is this Saturday, seven to eleven. Um we are gonna do a little thing different this year, we're gonna run through our drop off site, um we moved the things out, they're set outside right now. And uh you know, that all, what you can bring is all on the township website, I believe, so um if you have anything, if you bring it over, we'll be here, I'm gonna load it for you.
Okay. I think that's, I don't think of anything else, I know it's on, but just, it's it for things that are going on. Alrighty, Parks and Rec.
So I just wanted to update on some events, we had a movie night at the park um this past August, huge success, we had about probably a hundred twenty, five hundred fifty people come out for it. Uh it was a really good night, uh had a couple food trucks there, had Trinity Bible hanging up popcorn, had the Fleetwood library there doing some craft activities prior to the movie. Um it was a really great event, so it was well, uh well attended, um so just wanna thank everybody for attending that event. We also had our first food truck Friday, this past Friday, and I would say another hundred twenty five to hundred fifty people attended that event. Uh one food truck completely sold out, another one, half of their items at least sold out, and the other one had to call for backup because they were so busy. Um so it was a really, really great turnout, the day was great. Um and again, they're all donating ten percent of their sales to the Park and Rec for Maiden Creek, so um all that is gonna assist us with our um events, the stuff we help. Uh we have another food truck Friday, this Friday, next Friday, and the following. We have four trucks for each night, uh at least, there's a fifth truck on the nineteenth. And then we have our craft show flea market on the fourth. We have seventy vendors signed up at this point, we are fully booked, can't take anymore. Um so this would be a real test to see how well that field can hold up uh to that many, that people. Now, we also have three food trucks for that event as well. Again, every food truck that comes to our township will be donating ten percent of their sales to the Park and Rec uh fund. Um so uh the board and I will be out uh the Friday before, market spots for the flea market, so we'll have everything ready to go for Saturday morning. They'll be from ten to two, change the time as well, earlier didn't seem to make much sense last two times, so be ten AM to two PM. Uh we'll also be at Trinity Bible uh next Wednesday, that's their Iwana kickoff festival, um and they had asked us to do walking tacos. So we'll be there, uh in and out walking tacos, so that's just there. That'll be it for us for this year, um and next year, um I'll bring this up to you guys, and we have dates for all the events currently in motion. Uh we'll have our say cleanup, April twenty second at four thirty, or we'll be here at the Township Boat and they'll go to every single park and clean them up, pick up trash and everything we do every year. Uh craft show flea markets, May second and October third for next year. Movie nights, June twelfth and August twenty first. Food truck Fridays, we're gonna do the Fri, all the Fridays in April, we're gonna do all the Fridays in June, one of the Fridays will be movie night, but we'll have trucks there. Uh we're gonna do one date in August, um and then four dates in September for next year. I'm gonna start reaching out to trucks this weekend and start booking them for next year, earlier the better. So we have many more trucks that are interested in participating in our event, so we have about twenty, twenty two or so interested, um so. And then, of course, we'll have the two hundred fiftieth anniversary, uh two hundred, sorry, not because the uh sesquicentennial celebration next year.
Sesquicentennial.
Yeah.
Two hundred.
For forgive me, yeah. A lot going on there that were in for me, but anyway, um we're starting to plan that now at our park meetings. I think one of the ideas we had was having a children's parade around the walking path of community park, kind of initial thoughts for that, along with some other activities and things.
Dumping booth for the super cars.
Yes, that's. Yes, absolutely.
There's only one young enough to do that.
Just make sure the water's like eighty five.
That'll be that just in time.
Not water from your water, it's like.
Yeah.
So we're, we're starting to plan that event, um so we'll be working on that for the next several months, uh to hopefully, you know, have something, co-lesser come together, have a really nice event for our community. And sometime in July, we had not set a date yet, and that'll be to be determined, there's a lot of other things going on that way, so we're gonna try to work with some of the other closer town just to make sure that, you know, everybody doesn't have their celebration the same day. So we'll, we'll see how that works out, but a date will be determined later. Yep.
Yeah, Fleetwood Borough has invited us to sit in on the first planning session for their FACO group, so we don't conflict in areas, so let me go to that. I'm available, I'll go with you.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll touch a little on the benches more, I think we called a little before the, but um so I was looking at a couple things with it, discussing with Aaron here, Parks and Rec, to take back to I think we've not settled on doing it around the flagpole, I think that kind of makes the most sense there, um at the, at Community Park. Um so I'm thinking like just a brick patio with like a knee wall around the the edge of something that and then put up like low voltage lighting at the flagpole, you know, shining up instead of that rinky dink light we have there now. And uh build something nice there, hey, it's right by the pavilion, people can use it and look at it and whatnot, and uh and we also have the security camera ground too, if needed. One of the things that's not on here, and since things are kind of picking up, and I'm gonna forward this to you, I just can, got this on Tuesday, and I think I got one before, but I sent it to you, well, I'll send it to you again. Um there's a PA co-stars signage, LED scoreboards, awnings and more. Uh it's the second time I got an email from this company, um that they are co-stars. And I know we talked about potentially putting something up maybe at the intersection of of Park Road and Seventy Three there on that, on the corner lot. You know, with things developing as as much as they are through the Parks and Rec, uh I think, you know, like Fleetwood does, you know, we can do birthday announcements or whatever else, if our company wants to get in and put some you know, or actually, I think both ways, you guys can do like you're saying, announcements and Easter announcements, and if there's anything going on at social quarters or something like it. Just something that, an information board to try to get it out in center of town, just something to think about. The only reason I'll bring it up, like I said, I just got this email on Tuesday, so I didn't even know they they did stuff like that through co-stars for signage, so um just putting it out there.
Sorry, quick question, do you have a price range yet on the Veterans Memorial?
I didn't have any on it, yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Is that everything?
Yeah, yeah, we're good, I'll I'll do, I'll put out a Google form to gauge interest in donations for the Veterans Memorial. Um I'll have that typed up sometime, it's by next week, and I'll put it out there, so we can gauge interest in who would like to donate.
Sure.
Towards the project.
Awesome, perfect, thank you.
Alright, Diane?
Okay, uh we do have a Pendide roundabout maintenance agreement, and I just wanted to forward this feedback, because they did not give me a document that could be edited. So I'm gonna have to manually go through and compare it to the last document. But I'm just touching base that the board still only wants responsibility for the lights and nothing else.
Yeah, if we keep it the same, we're probably gonna be much better off.
I I don't understand, regardless, I know they pushed that back on us, I don't understand why, it's their, it's their road and we can't do anything about it, we couldn't do the signage without their permission, we can do this without their permission. So it's kind of frustrating that they're pushing this back like this. Uh I know when we had our meeting with Pendide, uh are they still, are we still going to concrete completely?
I haven't heard anything back from them.
That's what's frustrating about it, so they want an answer out of us, but we haven't heard anything back from them.
Diane, having a meeting with um Pendide on twenty third, different department, but it is discussing um the the barriers going down two twenty two.
From Seventy Three down or?
Down, from Schaefer down.
Gotcha.
Um so maybe I can get some information.
Okay.
That way. We'll try.
Yeah.
Uh Eric's gonna come to that one.
Okay. Yeah, we, we tried, the, the new one that they're looking to put in, it wasn't, we had a meeting here and we discussed how we wanted it to look and the maintenance stuff and all, all that kind of was touched, but it wasn't, it was the engineer and a representative, it was a, it was the contractor for Pendide. It wasn't even really an official from Pendide, however, this information was supposed to go back.
And because the plans weren't final.
Right.
And not recorded, they can't give us a copy of the plans, which is the first.
The next roundabouts are gonna be smaller than the ones we've got. That's already in plan.
The Pleasant Hill one.
They had to take a house.
Yeah.
They're gonna make the circle smaller itself, so that the speeds slow down.
They're putting, they had a word for their, a little less curve for everybody, they had to, they had to return to that. Chican, yeah, that's it, chican, yeah, chican on the, on that for that reason to slow them down, but yes, the, the farm on Pleasant Hill and North Ground two twenty two is, I'm guessing is being taken.
What are they doing with the trees?
That's staying.
Paul Martin's farm.
That's why they jog on it.
They won't give up, he, he wants that to be moved.
Right.
Because his front porch is basically gonna be right on the road.
Right.
Um but they won't budge on that, it's the farm that's catered for.
Okay.
That's slated to be taken.
That's right.
And that gentleman does not want his place taken, so it's like.
It's a lot of money.
He wants it moved.
I think they could move it around with, to accommodate.
One question.
Sure.
So forty. Since the roundabout's gonna be smaller, maybe we can pend on to cut the grass?
The radiation time to hurry.
I uh.
Where, where, where does this come? As much as I'm choking there, but where does this come that they don't even maintain these roundabouts, and now you're gonna be looking at there's another one with the grass?
And that was discussed when we had that meeting, because like I said, the, I was frustrated, I wasn't involved in the other two, and I was frustrated that the stones are in there. And as everybody in here probably knows, I do ride a motorcycle, and every time I go through these roundabouts after a truck goes through it or there's an accident out there, you know, the stones kind of just get pushed to the side. They're all over the place, I bet you there's probably a few good wheelbarrow full of stone in there.
I mean, I can imagine Pendide can't be held to keep the roundabouts clean for the community, it's just, you know, it's from a litigation aspect, where does the township stand in that?
It's subcontract.
Yeah, they sub it out and we pushed on, and the one time, in fact, I got called out, I called Keith out there, they had a huge tractor with a a super, what, twelve foot wide brush wall in the back, trying to mow those ponds. And I was like, what are you even doing? So we got on the phone with people I know, Pendide, again, people that aren't really in those positions but can make those phone calls. And then about, what, a week later, they came out with zero turns and actually did it the right way. And um I said, I don't even care, I don't even care if they don't go down in, just keep them maintained around the top. Like if it grows up inside, fine, I don't, I don't really, you don't see that, but what's around the top and up against people's properties.
So much to our state representative, we can get the representative involved in this?
We did last time.
Yeah, yeah, it just.
That would be damn wrong, I believe.
It just falls on deaf ears.
Alright.
Yep.
So like I said, maybe they'll cut the grass since it's small.
Yeah. I don't know if that one has storm ponds on it.
No, because that's part of Georgio's complaint, they believe that the stormwater is flowing over their property.
Correct.
Not being captured.
And that doesn't have any storm bases.
Why would they make it smaller when the eighteen millers have trouble getting around the two that are already there?
They have expert engineers.
But those are the ones that flunk. They have to go to college.
I'm not arguing with you.
The smaller one, maybe just go straight through.
Yeah, like I said, I pushed on them and they, they agreed, um it's gonna be concrete, I said, I want them to look like what they did in Oley. It's gonna be concrete, I said, I want them to look like what they did in Oley. I don't want stones in there, put concrete in it and be done with it, and, you know, Diane had a valid, you know, concern, like what happens if something gets damaged? Well, honestly, if a truck goes through it and they rip it up, their insurance is gonna pay to pour concrete in it. It's just gonna have to be the way it is, you know, and honestly, we're not, that's part of the agreement, we're not getting into that. We'll take care of the lights, they're gonna maintain the circle, so. But again, part of the frustrating thing, because I saw, I saw it happen, when, when the one at Tamarack got hit, it pushed the curb over, and they had forms of everything set up, and then they tore all the forms down and just stood up the broken piece and set it back in. It's still broke to this day. So why did they pay for a whole crew to come out there and, and form it up and get rid of it, it doesn't make any sense, but.
So when you said it's gonna be smaller, except a smaller diameter for the Pleasant Hill one?
Yeah.
But they're still gonna have the same two lanes going around.
Correct.
They wanna make it four lane all the way up to Cut Stant, why do you wanna make it all the way up?
Why do you see on that that they actually are trucks that do not navigate properly enough? And so if your lane is width is shorter, I mean, how much shorter is it gonna be?
Well, and I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's a hazard access, I would imagine.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And, and if they're not releasing the plans, they may have adjusted it soon.
Not until they're recorded, we cannot have.
Yeah. And this, and what, when is their, their start date for that, did they give one?
Uh, I think twenty-seven.
Okay.
They wanna let it end twenty-six, but you gotta move. You've got a lot to do.
Yeah, they haven't started taking power, they can't have it.
No, they have not. And then we have our annual elected officials convention at Ole on the sixteenth, and I'm signing everybody up. And that's it.
Thank you. All righty, new business. Adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing the submission of a local share agreement assessment grant for purchase of ambulance lift system.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just wanna say about that, that we got letters of support from Dave Maloney and Chris Gifford and online Hurry Penn Port Borough, Burn Township and Center Township, so. I think we have a good chance, it's gonna be a grant with everybody as a partner.
And these actually are good systems to have, lift the litter so that people are moving.
With everything that's going on right now, it'd be pretty wise for the state to be moving forward with some of that stuff. All right, do I have a motion adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five, is that supposed to be twenty-three?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, nevermind, that's one serious one. Uh, twenty twenty-five adopting twenty twenty-six pension minimum municipal obligation.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then just an update, there was a comment on our audit that we were supposed to have forty-two thousand dollars of state aid given to us um, in twenty twenty-four, and it was being held by the state. So for the last four months, I've been trying to get to the bottom of that, and in twenty twenty-three, your pension paperwork was not filed by the board manager. And so they did not know what our pension NMO was, and therefore they gave us an allocation. But we are super funded, and they told me this week that we are not getting any of that forty-two thousand dollars earmarked for us because we are overfunded. So it's resolved, we didn't get anything, and everything's up to date.
All right, so I have a motion to approve the bills and accept the trade report as was presented.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna do public comment for non-agenda items now. First row, second row, feel like an option, third row?
Cornerstone Park had trees planted by Burkes Nature, and all but four of them, someone came into the tree shelters and opened them up and cut them down, and then closed the shelters. Do we want to replant them, or just leave it and?
Do you have a minute?
Move on.
I do know one was damaged, I know there's all of the issues.
And it's all but four.
Do you have anything that you scheduled ready for this, this, this year?
For Cornerstone?
No.
But we have them for maiden, for the park.
Yeah, so we have to slip for spring, we can do the spring planting, but they've been everywhere. Unless they, yeah, I don't know.
Unobvience.
They're going, they'll, they'll be wanting to do them, see, it's not gonna hurt if you do, but don't go to them.
And they cut them back to?
Yeah, they're coming back.
They're not coming back.
Take over that for a while, so I'll see what happens.
So you just wanna go for planting at a different time, or just leave them because someone probably do it again?
I wanna, I haven't seen it this, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I'd actually like to go see where they are, which ones they were. Like, are they on, are they, are they on the residents, like, is it maybe somebody done, did one there and he went out and found them? Or is it kids just doing it, you know?
I mean, does somebody actually come and take the zip ties out, open the shelter, clean, cut them and close the shelter, that's.
That doesn't sound like.
Kind of odd.
No, it just sounds like somebody did it on there.
Doesn't sound like a kid.
Yeah.
Sounds like somebody doesn't run there. And to leave four, then. That's strange.
All right. I think it's gonna have to wait till next year anyway, just because if we table till next meeting, so I can get out and at least see what we're looking at, you know? So if it's, if it's close to property lines, maybe, maybe that person might have thought so, I don't know. But regardless, it shouldn't have.
I'll keep it in focus, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Because let Burkes Nature know what their intent is.
All right. Thank you. Anything else in that room? Next room?
Speaking of trees, we'll keep them on that topic here. My name is Bill McGrath, this is my wife Lisa. We live in Meadowbrook, we have been there nineteen years, and we were the first home to build in Meadowbrook in phase two. And we went to look at properties in there, we found one that was conducive not only for our home that we were building, but also to put an in-ground swimming pool in. The builder decided at that time, he was going to build a spec home right behind us, and long story short, they planted two weeping willow trees right on the back of our property. What makes this more unique is that there's an easement that separates our two properties. Now, these trees are the, the tallest structures in Meadowbrook, Josh, you've been out, you've seen them. And they're never taken care of, they've never been sprayed, they're full of bugs, the whole, I could go on and on, I don't wanna bore you. But the biggest problem we found is finally, I always thought there had to be roots there. On June thirteenth, when I was mowing the lawn, I spotted something brown, got off the tractor. Lo and behold, I find three roots going right under our, our in-ground swimming pool infrastructure. Contacted the owner, came over, seemed like he was gonna be working, you know, he was willing to work with me. And basically, he just made a left turn and says, no, you know what, I'm not gonna do anything. I said, you need to take the trees down, because if you don't, the pool is gonna get ruined, they're already probably in. And he said, nah, don't go deeper, he just kept giving me a cold shoulder, and finally, we decided, my wife Lisa and I decided to contact the company and bring in ground penetrating radar, which was very hard to do, because they're mostly commercial. They, finally, I got him to come in, and we now have flags through the whole back. Nineteen that are going right across the easement and into the in-ground swimming pool structure. So just trying to, you know, educate myself a little bit, I know that tree roots are considered a trespass if they come into an easement. But they're also an obstruction, because they're only gonna get bigger, and we're here to see if there's anything that can be done here. So number one, maybe two options, one, have them take those trees down. Number two, could we come in with a backhoe, make a township, and just dig down three and a half feet and go straight down to fifty feet and get all those roots out of there, because we're gonna lose, we're, this is our, this is our retirement home, we built that home. You know, knowing that when we were finished with our teaching positions, that this is where we're gonna live the rest of our lives, and we did not anticipate any attack or an invasion through an easement.
Yeah, I just wanna just show, Josh was out and I, last week, and we did meet with Diane with our concerns. So, you know, we're trying to step by step, we, we met with everybody, Bill met with the neighbor. Bill even offered him two thousand five hundred dollars to help with the cost of cutting the trees down. So we, we, we tried everything and we're at, at, we're at the end, we don't know what to do. But I just wanna show you some of the pictures of our property. And the. Okay, yeah, so.
What's the address signal?
One, two, four Regent Street. So here is the easement, this is our property, the ground penetration radar came in, stayed on our property side, because we had it, it's marked. And these are the flags showing where all the roots are, and they're all going up.
That's amazing.
Your property is behind this fence?
Uh, right, it's right there.
On the other side?
This side, this side, right here is the, our, the fence. Yeah, the willow trees are right there.
On someone else, not on the easement, but on the other guy's car?
Yes, yes, but really close to his fence on his property side. So as you can see, here is our fence, here's our in-ground pool, there's that, that's where the roots are already. So they're in our, they're, they're in our ground, in, inside our in-ground fence there, and at the pool. And then you can see here, we have some piping and everything else, this is the second willow tree, and it's all coming right up through. So kinda in conclusion, we talked to them, we met with people, we met with the arborist, the arborist says they're out of control. They, what is it, the canopy built goes?
Whatever the canopy of a weeping willow is, climbs up by three to five, that puts it right in on the water.
So they're, they're really destroying our property. And we don't know what to do. Yeah, well, Bill.
It's straight ahead because of the depth of the pool itself and the shell.
Yes, yes.
And if you, if you look at the research, if, anyone here could do this, if you just type in your Google, weeping willow tree roots, it's gonna tell you how they go in, and they, it's not like they have a conscience, but they're gonna be drawing the moisture. So your underground piping that drips, anything like that, it's attacking there.
And so it's attacking us in all directions, really, straight up.
So who, who owns the easement?
No, I've had a dedication for the easement, but it's on the recorded plan in Meadowbrook, and it's a stormwater easement.
Just for the tree.
Ross, it's on one twenty-nine directly.
Right, yes, you were out there.
That was a different.
And the thing is, you know, we thought with all the flags, he looks out there every day and sees the lines in the paint going into the pool. And we thought if he gave it a month or so.
Yes, he's gonna do something.
That, hey, you're gonna be responsible for this, and he's not budging, we tried everything, and.
Have you guys talked to an attorney?
I'm sorry?
Have we talked to an attorney?
Yeah, we did, and he said, you know, your, your township would probably handle that, he said, if you deal with me, you have to give us a twenty thousand dollar retainer.
Okay, goes to, when it goes to court. Yeah.
So we're kinda caught in a, and I can't dig in there, I mean, people say, hey, Bill, the neighbors are all saying, Bill, just get out there, we'll help you, we'll dig all those roots out, an easement.
It's an easement, we're stuck.
Well, your property line, I mean, the roots are on your property line too, so they're through the easement to your property.
All through it, yes, and into the pool zone.
So I think you need to talk to another attorney, I can't give you advice, because I represent this board, I think you should talk to another attorney. You have rights as a property owner with trespass, you, there's rights in Pennsylvania that property owners have. You may not even have to go to court, this, this is a special situation, as I say, I can tell you what you can do, so don't, don't take this as advice, but talk to an attorney, and the term you should use is self-help. That's one thing that's allowed in Pennsylvania in this type of, so it's analogous to a tree branch. And just, the law on a tree branch is if it overhangs your property line, you can cut it at the property line. If it damages that tree, it's not your fault. So self-help is what your attorney should look at, um, you may not even have to go to court.
Because it is an easement, is there anything?
I'm not talking about these, I don't, you may not, you may not be able to dig in the easement, you can do it, you can do this digging on your property potential.
Even in the easement?
No.
I can't, right.
And I don't, I don't know who owns easements, I don't know where your property line is, easement.
It's shared by both of us, but we have three fourths of it.
Okay, okay.
Cause your fence outside the easement.
Big time. Yeah, there's, there's outside, so, okay, so the, your property line's in the middle of the easement?
No, no.
Within, within the easement. I mean, the middle was meaning in, inside of it, so, yeah, if it's in your property line, you may have rights to do something right now with regard to the stormwater side of it, is when you then restore it, you'd have to restore it so the slope of the swell remains. But you may have rights to do something without it being.
So the township couldn't send them a letter saying, you know, we've observed tree roots in the easement, we recommend that you take your trees down?
I've already talked to the township about, or the, the board here about having executive session, like, I don't, I don't wanna give them advice in front of you.
Okay.
Attorney, my privilege, so I can talk to them without.
I didn't know, I didn't know this, this was discussed before, okay.
We've emailed about it, I don't think, we've sat down as a group and talked about it, I'm aware of the issue, so I did look into it.
Okay.
And, but I think, yeah, you should talk to an attorney and, and get advice from that attorney that you can rely on of what your rights and what you're allowed to do. But, yeah.
I was under the impression, either from your emails or from my own research, that if you do start cutting roots and it damages the tree, you can be held liable for that, no? No, I, I, I read that, no, it's self, that's under self-help.
Yeah, so, that's right, I want, but I want you to hear from your attorney through that, again, your protect advice, I don't wanna give you that advice.
Could we ask the township, just so we don't have to go to a different attorney and keep shopping attorneys? And the whole time, these things are growing, could we pay the township to come in, just come straight down with a backhoe and just take straight on through?
You can ask them, we can talk about it.
I understand we're not gonna get answers, we're, we're very concerned.
Desperate.
It's costing us money.
And they hear you, that's why they reach out to me to look into it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And we invite anybody to come to the property to see it, because Josh is there and he's like, whoa.
I'll be there with my floaties this week.
Hey, you're bringing a ruler.
Howard, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
All right, is that it for that room? All right, your last room?
I have a comment, since we're talking about trees. I have pictures too. This is something that she's been aware of previously, because those trees, specifically about the Willow Creek stream that the township owns, and brought this issue up in the spring, I was under the impression township is gonna do something, but there's some a huge tree across the entire stream. And this is part of Willow Creek, which is a high-quality stream, which is stopped by trout, and there were earlier concerns about water flowing. It totally blocks the front of it, here's a whole shot.
Down across, yeah.
No, it totally blocks it, there's other trees that are in the water too. Again, causing obstructions. Waters can't flow properly through it, it's causing erosion and sedimentation.
This is up from the one that was cut over already?
Well, there's all kinds of wood there, there's all kinds of trees downstream of the dam, upstream of the dam, and quite frankly, township needs to take care of the property, because it's causing, again, erosion, sedimentation along the stream, my property, downstream of other properties, and just upstream from that location is where they stopped it with trout. And it's like, I guess I'm not from the fall.
Are these two different locations?
No, there's one that's close to that.
So that is there, okay, that's there, got you.
So it just gives you an idea of how much.
Oh, that's.
This is the one, but now it looks like it's laying down in altogether now.
Well, that's actually been like that since the spring, one tree fell clear across the entire stream. And it's a very large tree, it's, it was a mature tree, it's still there, there's other sections of trees that also come down there, just downstream of that to the foreground, and again, all kinds of erosion, sedimentation.
Is this a bank for our property?
This is all the township property.
This goes up here, this is coming in this corner over here, so I'm not sure where, without, this is again the first I'm seeing this, so I'll go if I go where and look at it and see where it's at, I don't, I don't know exactly, I mean, that's probably.
It's, I would imagine about fifty to a hundred feet upstream of the low head dam.
Yeah, it's a low head dam, here's the probably, from the looks of it. We'll definitely get to put that out of the green for sure.
For maintenance purposes, we will need a permit for that, to remove that, is that correct?
I, I don't know, because the only way to get in to get that out is to track through the white lines to get it out.
In addition to that, there are other sections of trees that have come down along the stream, downstream of the spam, that need to. downstream of the dam that need to come out too. And the township has not locked it out of the past year, even though it bought it out multiple times, so. Uh, it's a, it's imperative that this be taken care of because it do, like I said, causing erosion, sedimentations, causing erosion and hydrations, causing other problems for people. We still have the Ross Walnut tree bridge, it's not been repaired, we've got a lot of erosion, sedimentation down there too. And all this water keeps coming down. Roting sandbars off.
Yeah, I'll take a look at, yeah, I'll walk up and take a look at it. We won't have it come next week, but, yeah, we gotta look into that again. I don't know how we're gonna keep. The hole, it's soaked.
And then in addition to that, there is erosion on the one stream bank that is causing more trees to start falling into the stream too. And there's riders there and that's already been a problem in the past.
So.
I don't know.
I hope we didn't remove the trees, but we probably are gonna need them for any other kind of work. And we've got, we've got permits now that we have to, we have to be.
Well, when you're in the back, it needs more ripract and some heavy stone because of this being allowed to be like this for all year, basically, it's probably more erosion.
We'll have to get a concentration rate to trick out for that, we can't just go in.
Okay, well, and I just want to ask that to be included in the discussion side. May I know where all your back meetings and emails on this, because I wanna make sure this is taken care of.
All right.
Take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
To see how the tow truck with a bucket on it out there, is that thing working or no?
That's borrowed.
Borrowed, yeah. But I saw you had a rental thing to do the whites and I was just wondering if the township knew, huh?
No, we share it with Fleetwood, but it's, um, pretty patchy.